...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a breathing justice.
Thank you, everyone. As we get started, we will start with a public hearing, but before we get into that, we always try to review our mission and vision and mission statement. Our vision is inspiring all learners to be engaged and successful. Our mission, to provide an enriching environment to meet the needs of all learners. And our core values, respect, integrity, students first, and excellence. Rise to the occasion and reach to the future. As we make all of our decisions tonight and as we move through our agenda, please keep all that in mind. So, um, start the, tonight, we have a public hearing. It's kind of a two-part public hearing, so we'll open that public hearing, Mary Beth, what's seven oh four? We'll say, we didn't quite hit seven, but close.
So, our first public hearing is for the proposed use of SAVE, which is Sales Tax Revenue, for an athletic infrastructure project. This is the project that we approved last week, and in time you use those SAVE dollars for athletic facility infrastructure not attached to the school, a public hearing also goes with that.
So, this will be the time for everybody to speak up, Matt, if they had anything.
I'm not sure when I speak.
You'll be a part of the agenda, Michelle.
Tell me.
You bet. That's great. Not now. You can if you want, but. And then you want to talk about the second part of it?
The second public hearing is for the proposed issuance of approximately nine million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of school infrastructure sales service and use of tax revenue refunded bonds. That's the refinancing of our current debt and adding the new debt and using the SAVE dollars to pay for those bonds.
And will SAVE us approximately how much, show them that refinance?
Um, yeah, two hundred, a little over two hundred thousand.
Two hundred and thousand? A year?
Total.
Total, okay.
Total. A good question was asked of us, it was called in. We also have the Titan, the general obligation bond. We are not refinancing that. We did look at that, and Piper Sander ran those numbers for us, but the savings is not significant enough to do that at this time. But that was a really good question, something I should have brought up last month when we discussed that, but at this time, it wouldn't be efficient to refinance that debt.
Any comments on the second part? Just hearing done, we'll close our public hearing and we'll move into our agenda then. Uh, let's see, we'll call, we need a motion to approve the agenda list in front of you.
So moved.
Thank you, you have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Michelle, this is where we are at, our hearing of delegations, and you're on our, you've called in and asked to speak to the board, so we appreciate that. Do you have our?
Do I need my mask?
You can take it off.
If you're far enough away, can you use the mic?
I can.
And then state who you are and everything for the camera, and it just goes public.
Okay. I'm Michelle Yelly, and I am a citizen, I guess, of this town. And I was just, um, it was something that both Al and I were kind of passionate about, and Al is on call tonight. And, um, I saw the video come across about the new athletic facility, and I thought, this is amazing, this is wonderful. I'd just be happy if women's restaurants that closed the doors, you know, so this is, this is wonderful. Um, but I was doing some asking, and, um, tell me if I'm wrong, and if I'm wrong, then I have nothing to say. But is there plans for an eighth track lane in this proposal?
Not in this project, there is not.
Okay. Well, I guess what I'm asking is that you would please at least consider making room for that if it's not going to be done, because when I was looking at pictures of it, it looked as though it was tiered all the way down to the track. And I thought, if this isn't done, if there are no provisions made for it, it will never be done. And we cannot have district or regional track meets because of, uh, conference track meets, rather, because we're missing a lane, and it seems so silly. And we have this, you know, we have this amazing facility, and we have this opportunity to not just, I mean, I know it's, I know it's expensive, I know that, I know it's a pain in the butt to move the light posts, um, but we have this opportunity to bring people into our town, and this is a moneymaker, too. If you have these needs here, it's not just about spending money, it's making money also. And it's, and it's helping our community, and to me, if there is not an eighth track lane put in, the project's incomplete, as far as I'm concerned. Um, you know, Al and I have actually made a list before, a physical list, of what we would do if we came into money. And don't get me wrong, we have a nice life, we're putting our kids through school, um, and we're planning on no social security. But beyond that, you know, we don't come from money, and if we came into money, we've have a list, this is where we put it, we put some back into the school system. And when I look at the track situation, I'm like, okay, you have this beautiful football field now, and that's basically the center. The next thing, as far as I'm concerned, would be to move out, because you can always do these other things on the parameters, but if that track isn't done, then, you know, if you do this beautiful facility and make no allowances for it, it can never be done. And, um, Lord knows, we're all about, all out going to sports, and we always have been, and our kids were very involved in sports. And, um, our daughter in softball. Well, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do something for softball also, because it's not anti-softball at all, but I'm just looking at the physical, where that is, it's on the parameters. Anything that is on the parameters of the property could be done later. And the money will come again, but if you don't have the space for this track lane, then it can never be done. So, I guess I'm just asking for this consideration, and, um, I mean, in a way, I mean, Al and I are both passionate about it, at the same time, I was like, Michelle, our kids are done. I mean, we have, we have no, we have no stakes in this, we have no investment in this, we just want this for the community, and we want this for future generations. So, anyway, that's what I'm asking.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, can we go ahead a little bit? Yeah.
I mean, I just think it's important if a question's raised, just to kind of discuss it. I think, to address your point, Michelle, I mean, I appreciate you talking, I mean, it's, just shows that you care about the schools, you know, like you said, I mean, it's, kids are gone, what do you have to gain? But there have been discussions, I think, you know, Mr. Cargan, you've talked a little bit, but I think that's an important question for the community, because there are people that I think share your sentiment, you know, towards this, right? I mean, it's just, we look at the facilities, we have amazing facilities, but we don't have an eighth, you know, track, and it's a, it's a...
Well, can I say one other thing?
Yep.
In this school system, throughout the years, this is where we have the All-Americans, this is where we've had the most people go to state, we have more success, honestly, in the kids, in the track program than we have through the years in the others. And I'm not saying anything bad about the others again, but this is, this is a big deal. Um, we've, we've just had, you know, we've just had a lot of people, Sundance, you know, as I think through the years, there's been a lot of people that have gone to state in track. This would make a big impression, to have a nice, complete facility for this.
No, I think you're right, I think it's, you know, on the wish list and a long-term plan, I mean, it's, and you alluded to it, there's a little bit more than just putting in an eighth lane.
Yeah, I know that.
And you know this, and I'm just, I just...
And I actually know the behind the scenes of why they didn't do it to begin with, because Bruce Sundance called me and told me why, because he had to tell him I was going to be talking, so...
Yeah, I mean, for, I mean, people that are watching, I mean, the lamp, the light posts are presently, would have to be moved, it's more than just putting in an eight-lane track, and that's a, that's a rather large expense. We did discuss it when we did do the field, just about what would need to happen with that, and we talked about plans as far as, you wouldn't actually just put a lane around the, around the outside, you could, you'd put a lane on the home side of the bleachers, right? We'd put a lane on the inside, and on the other side, we'd put a lane on the outside.
I see.
And then you, you could make an oval, it wouldn't be like this, I don't know if it'd be perfect, sort of, it would change...
It would change the...
It would change the oval shape?
Right, right.
But it'd still be four hundred meters.
Right.
But it'd be four hundred meters, and it'd be an eight-lane, um, track, you know, as far as you, you know, again, as far as it affecting the school, um, you know, we've had this to it, what it prohibits us from doing is the district track meets, which, you know, when we think about our mission and goals, I mean, it's students first, you know, sort of, sort of thing, and it would be nice for our students in our community to have a district track meet here. Um, it's not a big moneymaker for the school, it does bring people in, we do make the money off the concession, but we don't take the gate for that, the state does, which I know you're probably familiar with, but, um, I think it is important that you bring up, you know, at least leave the possibility there, you know, as you're doing these other things, you know, to be frank, I don't know if it's going to happen right now, you know?
No, I understand.
But, but, but to do, the ability to do it in the future, I think, is a very important thing, and I think we have considered that as far as...
In the, the, first of all, I'd say, I couldn't agree with you more how great it would be to have an eight-lane track. Um, and like Dr. Owens, it certainly, it's been discussed in a couple phases of the project, and, and long-term, it's included, and, um, and what we're doing now does not, is not into that. In that video, it does look like it's tiered, and it is tiered, but the last part of that is actually gray, so there, it's certainly, we can expand in that direction still, but, um, we, the lights probably need to be moved, the grandstand probably needs to be moved, and that's probably when we get to this, when we look at our grandstand press box in that area, is when we're able to tear all of that up and then, and then put the track in. But you're right, it would be fabulous to have, it'd be a wonderful experience for our kids, it doesn't probably fit into the financial or the objectives of this project, but it's certainly...
Totally understandable, I was just hoping that you would at least, you know, make provisions for it in the future.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, and then when Al and I come into that big lump of money.
We're hoping for it.
It's there.
Yeah, it is, we talked about too, and, you know, just even with this project, and you've probably been to a lot of tracks in different facilities, about even putting a walking concrete for spectators around the track, you know, so people could get down to the track and closer. And that's, we considered that, because you could do part of that with this project, it would fit in at least at one end. Um, part of it for not doing it is cost, I mean, it raises the cost for this about a hundred thousand dollars, but also, when you start doing that, and we've talked about the eight-lane track, if we start putting a hundred thousand dollars here, then we're ripping it out later when we're doing what you're talking about, so...
Right, right.
So, but I appreciate your input, and I think it's something that is important to bring up to the community, because a lot of people have asked. I, I used to say, why don't we have an eight-lane track when I first came to town, you know, it's just an obvious thing, and then it was, you know, you learn a little bit more...
Well, when our kids were in track, when they were in school, it was like, inevitably, every meet, home meet, we, that was the discussion. Why isn't there an eight-lane? Oh, darn it, why isn't there an eight-lane? Um, it's a discussion that I've heard amongst many people that aren't necessarily here. Um, I've had teachers talk to me about it, but they don't want to get involved because they're teachers, you know, and I totally get that, and I totally understand that. Um, we, we, Al has talked to people at the hospital, I mean, we've talked to a lot of people, a lot of people weren't even aware, you know?
I just think it's on the list of things to do, it's, you know, prioritize where it's going to happen, like you said, I mean, handicap accessible facilities is near the top of the list, you know, functioning bathrooms and clean bathrooms are...
Or is it shut?
Or is it shut at the top of the list?
Yeah.
So, I, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna happen, it's just a matter of when, it's the same thing with the football field, you know, when is that going to happen, you know, and it was just, it needed to, because it was its time, you know, they're repounding it, so, when we look at, I can't imagine we stick a lot of money back into the track without really making it the track that we want, you know, we've resurfaced it...
I understand.
Yeah, so...
Yeah. No, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you listening, and I just, I guess I just wanted, I was just hoping that, you know, after I saw that diagram, and I just went, whoa, um, if it didn't happen now, then when would it ever happen? But if it's in a plan down the road, and if there is room, that's a totally different thing.
Yeah, if there's room, it's not going to look like your perfect oval-shaped track, but it's, but it can happen. And I'm not sure if it's, I mean, I believe we can still have a district meet with an eight-lane track if it's long line.
Yeah, yeah, well, the engineers talked to us about it in the field project, about how you would reshape it, I think that's a typical thing that they do, that the normal eye doesn't even see, but, um, it's something they certainly want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for your time today.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you want, you can leave, too, it's kind of...
The crowd will take off.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to move into our consent items, and then we'll get the agenda, I think most of them were sent out to you to review earlier, so I don't know if there's any questions. Um, I can tell you, I did review the December invoices, and as usual, impeccable, their receipts are with the, there's receipts with all the invoices, I think Mary Beth, and there was just one, that it was a timing issue, there was a ref this past weekend for a wrestling tournament, that won't be on what you saw. So, I mean, it wasn't much package we already sent out, or a referee for the weekend, so otherwise, everything was in great order.
In the financial statements, I want to highlight that our total expenses to date are five million three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and our total revenues to date are six million two hundred and fifty-eight. That's great, we want those revenues higher than those expenses, and they're about a billion dollars higher. Mary Beth and I did, we did some work in tracking our expenses, because they're, they were up higher than we probably wanted them to be, um, we can probably relate all that to COVID. Um, you know, we do have a lot of COVID-related expenses, from COVID lead to mitigation efforts and so on, so, um, we'll continue to track those things and itemize it out, which is what we've been advised to do, in case there is funding that comes to cover expenses that haven't been to this point.
Any other questions for what you have reviewed? All right, hearing done, take our motion for, to approve the consent items.
I do a motion to approve the consent items.
Thank you, Todd, do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Todd, we have a motion and a second. All in favor to approve the consent items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next, we'll move into communications to the board, and we have a presentation by...
We do, I'm getting APTG hooked up here, something that, that we've talked about as a board, and something that we've discussed here. Hi, Erin, how are you?
Hey, I'm good. How are you guys today?
Pretty good, I'm going to be right with you, all right?
Okay, sounds good.
So, the, um, that we need to continue improving upon is our ability to communicate with our families, and electronic means of communication is, um, you know, in today's age, obviously a very effective way, and something that I think we can do better. Um, I've started to communicate with APTG, Erin from APTG, earlier in the year, and what APTG does is they design apps for schools, so, you know, and she's going to briefly describe what they could do for us today, but, you know, kind of simply is that, um, our families would get the Algonquin Community School District app on their phone, and this would be like a one-stop shop that they would go, and they would get lunch menus and schedules, and be able to click on a teacher or a staff member to contact them, um, it would be a way for us to communicate directly through the app to, to their phones. Um, we wouldn't lose platforms like Twitter and Facebook and, or text messages, but we would only do it one place, and it would still go to all those different, so we would be far more efficient, I think, in what we're doing. So, Erin's going to talk a little bit about APTG and what it could do for our school.
Good, sounds good. Um, yeah, so I'm Erin, even though I think Joe said that two or three times, just in case that was lost somewhere. Um, my thought, Joe, so I was going to quickly go over just like the sixty-second snapshot from high level and then dive into the tools, does that work?
That works good, and they are, boardroom is, has everyone in it today, I won't flip it around, but they're, they're there, you're set to believe me.
Okay, oh, I can imagine it for sure, no pressure, I could see myself up on the big screen behind you, too, so... Um, well, just to recap, the conversations that Joe and I have had over the past few weeks, um, is pretty much echoes conversations that we've had with superintendents all across U.S. as far as there being these new pressures, um, to not only get information out to like parents, community members, stakeholders, but also moving beyond just that communication piece, to really highlighting the stories and things that you guys do uniquely well, um, you know, all those pieces that you really love about the school district. And so, what we hear the challenges, is not that these stories don't happen and reflect these things, it's that it can be time-consuming to get these out, given the current tools in education, um, which can be a problem, because everyone on the staff, if they're already wearing three or four hats, and it's hard to update, fewer things get out, so that's a first problem. Second is, we talked to a lot of schools that feel like, in some cases, they need to be over-communicating, they're not really sure where to start, so there's a lot of different places people are going to for information nowadays, um, so that's the second thing, and I think it would be smart to start there, um, because as far as engaging and connecting with current stakeholders, current families, I'm sure everyone's seen that the place for everyone to tap nowadays is the smartphone, right? Now, I'll assume that everybody's nodding their heads, because I can't see you guys. Um, but since that's what everybody has on their hands, it's pretty much like a fifth limb for people nowadays, if we want to connect and engage people, again, that's a good place to reach them, so I'm going to share my screen with you guys, actually. And Joe, do I have the ability to share my screen?
Um, you were the host, right, so...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I am, okay. So, you're right, I was thinking that we were on your limb for some reason. Okay, cool, can everybody see that okay? I think so, because I can see it on the big screen behind you. Um, so if people are on their phone, you know, and that's where everyone is nowadays, we want to connect and engage with them, we want them to be able to stay up to date on everything that's going on, it makes sense to reach people there. But where we do see this go wrong sometimes is, schools will see the opportunity, but they'll think it's all about going out and getting an app, and so they'll go out, get an app, and it looks something like this, so this is not an app that we built, but it is a pretty typical for our school app. And so, say, I'm a parent, it's probably going to be your primary audience here, and I just want to know something like what's on the lunch menu, so come over here, click on lunch menu, and then once this loads, this happens. Are you guys with me on like, why, because it's a pretty frustrating experience?
What that did is actually take them to another website, just took them right back to the school website.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly, and that's super frustrating, because at the point, it's to reach people on their phone, and all this does is take you to the website, it kind of defeats the purpose there. Um, it's a good example, too, because the school's trying to do the right thing, like reach people where they're at, but if, you know, like user experience is this bad, like no one's probably going to even want to come back and keep using this. Uh, that is where we try to take a very different approach, so this is an app that we built, stay on that same parent from earlier, just want to know what's on the lunch menu, so click down here on dining, and boom. So, everyone's seeing, hopefully everyone's seeing the difference in the user experience there, right? All right, and it seems probably funny that I'm showcasing like the lunch menu here, but again, at the point, it's to connect and engage with current families, like reach them where they're at, but it makes sense that if the lunch menu, right, is something they need on a pretty regular basis, that if we can get those small things to them in a quick and easy way, has everyone seen how we're encouraging those return visits to the app? All right. Um, another example, something a parent probably need on a pretty regular basis, especially this year, is, you know, being able to contact someone on staff, so now they come in here, send a code on email, give her a call, they get just a few clicks away. Events is another thing, right, one that I can personally relate to, because it's on my calendar, I might forget it. So, now the parent can add the event directly to their own calendar, send the event to other people, so like grandmother, grandfather, aunt, uncle, whatever the case is, um, and even get turn-by-turn directions to offsite events. So, I know I'm going kind of fast here for time's sake, but, does everyone see how easy it is for parents to get the information they would need on a regular basis? All right. Well, the coolest part about this is, so once you have people coming back with the things they need, you build that audience, you can also use this to help you showcase those things that you guys want to promote, those things you do uniquely well, and that's happening in the live feed section. So, you'll notice this looks similar to like a Facebook, Twitter, some sort of social media, uh, but it's not, it's all happening within the school app. So, as far as having people coming back with the things that they need, and having these positive stories, like all within one location, does everyone see how it becomes like the one-stop shop or source of truth for like your current community members, current parents?
Joe, can I ask a question there?
Yeah.
So, I noticed up there it says, um, the live streaming concert is posted to their Facebook page?
Yeah.
Do they have links, can we link to sports events, concerts, right there on the app?
Yeah, so, the question, Erin, was, you know, the, one of those posts was a link to like a Facebook page, and the question, and the question is, can we link to our live feed for, or maybe our live feed for basketball games, whatever, and the answer is, is yes. Um, to this, to this live feed, um, there's, you know, I would post a Thrill Share, and that Thrill Share, I could type whatever I wanted, and I could send it to Facebook or to text, but it all shows up right here, so yes, we could put live links in there to other places or, or any type of stream that we want to.
Yeah, and again, cool. Is there another question?
Nope.
Erin, I want, I was going to ask, one of the things when Joe was talking to us about this during our agenda review, that got me interested, was how often do you see students using this, rather than the public?
Did you hear all that, Erin?
Yeah, I think so, how often do we see students using this?
Yeah.
Um, and I assume, as far as students using it, you mean like using the app versus doing the posting?
No, just, just as far as, you know, them knowing what's on the lunch menu and...
Yeah.
You know, knowing about events and their calendar and things, how often do you see, I mean, is this built more for the community and for parents, or is this geared also towards, I mean, every kid seems like they have, not every kid, but many have smartphones themselves, I mean, is there, do you see kids using this and taking advantage of this and other?
Yeah, absolutely, so kids, parents, community members, mostly parents, but kids and community members as well, so the same idea holds true for those students, right, especially some of the older ones, if they're looking for what's on the lunch menu, or, you know, they need to contact someone on staff, the same idea is there for them as well, like again, giving them the things they need on a quick and easy basis or way to get the information in order to keep them coming back. So, that's another good point, it's another good way to engage, you know, students as well as parents, as well as community members, too.
I think it creates an opportunity to communicate with your, your students, specifically, I'm talking about maybe middle school, high school students, um, you know, we, we send out announcements, we do some of that through, um, you know, their emails and Google Classroom, some of that, but you can also send just direct messages to them like this, which I think is really cool. I know, I have a nineteen-year-old, a sixteen-year-old, and a thirteen-year-old, and if it buzzes on their phone, they get it, to get it any other way, it's pretty tough to get them in, you know, as, as direct as that, so I, I think it just, it reaches our people in a way, and reaches them probably more effectively than what we currently are.
Good.
So, would, would we still, like, would there still be a website?
Yeah, that's a good question.
That community people could go to, or other...
The question was, would there still be a website?
Yeah, so there still would be a website, and I can hop over there and show you what that would look like. Um, one more point, I guess, to make on the live feed, just to kind of piggyback off of what you were saying, Joe, as far as reaching more people, the cool part about like having this live feed section that looks similar to social media, is now like, you don't have to have a login in social media, ultimately not everybody's going to, um, like you were saying, the street's a broader audience for parents, community members, students, like all around there.
Yeah, we, we try to use social media platforms now to communicate, and that, not all of our people are on social media, our youngest ones are, but they can still get the post in the same way from, from the app.
Does this limit our staff's touch points of where we have to enter information, or, are we going to continue to send out all these different platforms?
You know, on a, on a late start, you know, I send that out to like five different places, um, I would send that out to one... places, I would send that out to one spot, right, right here, it would still go to those, but you don't have to be on Facebook to get that message, you don't have to be on Twitter to get that message, you don't have to be in G O B alerts to get that message, you can just get it right there, so yes, it absolutely limits our staff touchpoints dramatically.
And Joe, one of the things we talked about, I know as a parent, it gets kind of overwhelming sometimes between, you know, multiple kids in the district, and emails, the reminds, I mean, I'm getting texts, Facebook.
You get one, you get one email on the same subject for each kid you have in the district?
Yeah, or you get it, and, and my, what I find is, I, I don't know who it's for, I mean, I gotta kind of, I gotta investigate which, which, which channel is this for, and especially when the remote learning is happening. So, in our discussions, it sounds like this platform too kind of helps centralize, make it a one-stop shop, so you're not a parent feeling like you gotta check five different places, or did this come in, and maybe provides a little bit more information, so it's consistent, so we know which kid is for, which school it's for, that kind of thing.
And we also have an ease of posting to certain buildings and districts and grades, right, and you know, you can, there's difference, which we can do some of that through Infinite Campus also, but I think it's a, it's a simpler process here, and all those gray areas that, you know, communication is tough, you know, those rash of emails you get, if you have multiple kids in the districts, and so that we can clean that up here with the one, one place to go for school, the family communication.
In addition to what I'm seeing up here, if we want to report annual data, school improvement data, annual reports, that needs to go out to the entire school district community, not just parents of kids?
Correct.
But the almost sixty percent of the parents out there, we can post that and have it going to everybody in the community?
We can, and that's why I think, Erin, the phrase you used, you're not in the website business, but you still do integrate the website, because we do know that you still have annual postings, for example, and different things that need to be displayed that way, so there still is the, you know, physical website is a, is a term, but there still is the traditional website that takes place that integrates with the email.
Yeah. Yeah, and like you were saying too, I don't know, I'll get to the website too, to give you guys an idea of what that would look like, but for what Joe was talking about as far as getting the information out, like doing the posting, so obviously the mobile app piece is important, but we don't want to give you guys one more thing to update, manage, and so what everyone's looking at here is called Thrill Share, so it's the first ever publishing platform in education, and so say you guys did want to post something going on, like check out the pictures from the school life, just as an example, you guys could post this story, the picture, set of pictures, send it to your Facebook, your Twitter, L F is the live feed on the mobile app plus the website, so Facebook, Twitter, app, website, you can send a push notification now to people that have the app load, app downloaded, so like an added layer of communication there, and then for critical information, emergency alerts, you can still send those text messages and do those voice calls all right here from within Thrill Share. So not bad as far as having everything rolled into one, right?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty awesome right there.
Again, so we want to give you guys the ability to be able to share all, obviously all the communication, but again, maybe pass that to the highlighting all of those everyday, like student success stories that are happening. And like Joe said, we do focus on the mobile apps, that is the biggest opportunity to reach people nowadays, and then also Thrill Share on the backend that connects everything, but for consistency's sake, we also would build and post the website, so you can see, you know, very clean, modern design, ADA compliant, of course, but more importantly now, you'll notice these stories down here, consistent with what we saw in the app earlier. So the live feed, news, events, all right here on the front page.
Who would be the?
So again, the primary point here, again, is just to maintain the consistency across all of those platforms, and then, now does everyone see like how it can help create a good version of fashion too, now that all of these sections become dynamic with Thrill Share?
Who would be the administrator that would do this? I mean, once it's built, who in the district would actually run something like that?
The question was, who, who would be the administrator? Once it's built, I know, how do we get the information out there? We have control over that, you know, like the feed, for example, I, I could get the whole staff access to that, and then maybe Mrs. Schucher approves anything that comes from a Busha Wallace staff toward to be posted, or we do that through building principles. As far as the lunch alerts, she, this is something I've had her show to me before, or lunch menus, we, we enter those in there, but we enter them now, so we would just enter them in one place, rather than now we create it and we add it to the website and recreate and do all those things. So as far as administrator, we do that locally, correct, which is how we do it now, we just have, you know, if I can't post something to our website now, Mrs. Schucher can't post something to our website now, we have to go through different people to get that done, that, that would be gone, so that it would be much more simple and much easier for staff to get stuff on there.
In real time?
Yeah, right, in real time.
Does this replace Infinite Campus?
Does not replace Infinite Campus, you actually integrate with Infinite Campus, right?
Yeah, so we'd set up a sync, so that if you guys updated something in Infinite Campus, we'd set up a sync to happen, typically it's once every evening, we could do it however often you guys needed, but say at like ten PM, Infinite Campus would send information to Thrill Share, so like if you guys needed a cancel school the next morning, for example, all of the information in here, like all of these lists, would be reflective of whatever you guys had put in Infinite Campus the day before, so it's another cool part, there's no double management with S I S and Thrill Share, they would work with each other.
So if I wanted to send a message out to high school vocal, because we have that marked as, as in the campus, then I could do it, because it's the A and R to get, I could pick up any group that we have in the campus and send a message to them.
But that only syncs once a day?
Yeah, but they're always on there, so, you know, that, that would be very up to date to do that way.
So Infinite Campus would still, wouldn't be necessarily the communication part, but grades, accounts, that kind of stuff, we'd still?
Yeah, it would still be our student information system, that houses all of that, it just probably wouldn't be our communication piece.
And two, I think someone was asking about like who would have access to do the posting, and like you said, it would happen locally still, because you guys, it would be the ones closest to the stories, and along those lines, it's probably to be people like teachers and coaches that are the closest to all of those moments you're trying to highlight, and so now you can set it up to where if I'm a teacher or someone I want to make a post to Facebook and Twitter, for example, and I click publish, well, you can set it up, it will show up in this waiting for approval section down here, so you can get people involved, but I guess does everyone see how like, there's still, you know, someone that's kind of double checking, making sure it's in line with what the district's trying to promote?
Yep. All right, any other questions for Erin? Well, Erin, thank you very much, I appreciate it, I think you gave us what we were looking for.
Awesome, yeah, thanks for the time, and yeah, I'll look forward to reconnecting with you guys soon.
All right, take care.
Bye, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. So was this just a, like informational piece?
Just informational piece, something I wanted to show you guys that we have been looking at, and it's something we want to do, we can look at in future, future months.
You brought up in our review, I mean, approximate cost is actually surprisingly affordable, it's like what?
Ninety-five hundred dollars.
And that's a yearly?
That's a yearly, we, we do have a yearly expense with our current website, so it's actually, you know, you subtract it to, I don't know, like sixty-five hundred and something is what this would cost a year.
And it's pebble money, so it's...
It's pebble money, it's not new, it's pebble money, yeah.
And there's no upfront, it's just an annual fee?
There is an upfront cost to build it, yes.
But it's affordable.
Yeah, very affordable. And then you said you had presented it to administration, and they seem to be excited about it. Really excited, they just keep asking me if we're doing it or not, and so we're discussing still something, so, yes.
I think it's, I'm just gonna, I know we're trying to move along, but I think it's important that people watching and know this too, that, you know, they say, gosh, you guys are, like somebody said, you're spending money, you know, like, you know, where's the money coming from? You know, there is funds, we all know this, this is pebble money, this is for our facilities and improvement at school, this is not what we pay salaries out of, you know, so we're not taking away from raises or insurance or anything like that, this is money that we get, that we can only spend on facilities, websites, those sorts of things, and...
Not instructional items.
Yes, and that's, when we say affordable, it's just we have money in that account that we can do, that we've allotted, that can make this happen, so.
And I liked how easy this looks to run, to manage, for people.
All right, we'll move into our superintendent's report.
I want to talk about Governor's proclamation occurred, probably three weeks ago, maybe a month ago now, there's a couple pieces to that that really affected schools, and one is that it got, it prohibited middle school sports, and that was lifted last Wednesday night, so now our middle school sports can practice once again, and they can compete once again, it did put a limit on spectators for all high school and middle school events, now at two spectators per participant, if, if available, I know we'll run into some middle school events where we go on the road and they can't house in their middle school gyms two spectators per, per competitor, so that, that could happen, as well as social distancing, which Mr. Jakeson's done a great job of organizing that in our gym, so that we are sitting six feet apart, which is part of the proclamation, and then masking is part of that, so...
So they can't house it, meaning that it's not big enough for six feet?
Yes, exactly right.
So then do they allow no spectators?
Yes. The example that comes to mind is, our seventh grade boys go to Clarion to play basketball on Thursday, there are no visitor spectators. I don't think we'll have a lot of gyms that we plan that are like that, but there are some. So that proclamation was extended last Wednesday through this Wednesday, I really don't look forward to be lifted at this time, but numbers are improving, so maybe down the road. There was a change in quarantine requirements also a few weeks back, so a student or staff member who was quarantined, not a positive test, but quarantined due to close contact, can now return after ten days, or after seven days if they have a negative test that occurs after five days, so within forty-eight hours, which, that's great, that's a good thing for us, because it gets our, our kids in school, which we know is, is most important. Something we've talked about in the past is a class, classified staff retirement program, this became a topic last year when we put in place the early retirement program for our teachers, so then we, we have discussed a classifieds non-teaching staff retirement program. This would be different from our early retirement program for teachers, in the fact that there's a significant financial savings that occurs with a teacher retirement program, this would not have a significant financial savings to it. However, I do think it's important for us to keep working to be, to strive to be the best employer that we can, and to do, and to be the district that our staff wants to be a part of and doesn't want to leave. A classified staff retirement program would offer an incentive for our great employees to stay in the district, to get to a certain longevity level, and I, I think would possibly provide an incentive for others to want to work for the district as well. Some, some ideas, and these are, these are just things for you guys to discuss, could be a, a two-year retirement program for the next two years, this year and next, for all of our full-time twelve-month employees that are non-teachers, who are fifty-five years of age and have worked twelve years or more, as well as all classified employees, non-teachers who are fifty-five years old and have worked in the district for twenty-five years or more. A possible benefit could be a one-time stipend of one percent of their previous year's earnings multiplied by years of service, capped at twenty-five, so in, in many cases, that would be twenty-five percent of their salary the year before, plus twenty-five dollars per unused sick day, typically, you know, our, our people are maxed out on six, sick days, so it's around a hundred, a hundred of those for twenty-five hundred bucks. We talked about a limit of three, classified, you know, limiting that per year, I don't think that's something that's sustainable over time, that the district could financially afford to do, and I say a limit of three, that we have this in place all the time, but just three per year, that, that isn't something that we could afford to do over a longer period of time. One, your guys' thoughts on a classified staff retirement program?
Joe, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it relates to just the retirement benefits in general, as we're talking specifically around the non-teaching and certified staff here? What are our retirement benefits? Is it, is it an IFRS program?
From the district, there is no retirement benefit, there's no retirement program, our employees at district are IFRS employees, so they, they do have a retirement cert, IFRS has a very good retirement stipend, money, that they can get when they're vested, and they have eighty-eight, which would be age plus years of service equal eighty-eight, then they're vested in IFRS.
Okay, so all these individuals can participate in IFRS if they choose, is that, am I understanding it correctly?
Yes.
They do, they have to.
They do.
They do.
Why the difference in years between full-time and of twelve and fifty, twenty-five?
Yeah, trying to capture the difference between the full-time twelve-month employee and other classified staff, not a magic number to twenty-five, but just trying to create a number that rewards longevity.
Okay. Have you, I mean, how many do we have eligible? Do you know? I mean, have you looked into that?
Yeah, doing it just like this with the twelve, the full-time, and then the classified, I think we had eight, eight I think, it was, it's eighty-five thousand dollars total for both years?
Okay.
Not each year, total for both years.
So eight out of, combined out of both groups?
Yes.
Okay.
So eight for both years, total?
Eight total.
And I'm, in my mind, I'm kind of trying to compare this against, you know, the typical private sector, so does the district pay in at all to, to IFRS?
Yes, yes, what percentage is?
Nine point four percent. And does the employee pay, is there like a matching? Okay. So is, is it, what'd you say, Mary Beth, nine point four percent the district pays, and then the employee can put additional?
Well, they, there's a percent that they have to, it just...
Difference between IFRS and maybe like 401K is those, that's fixed, you don't...
It just is like, like a tax, it's a...
It's a straightforward...
Straight rate.
Gotcha.
And you're told how much the district has to put in, and the employer has to contribute?
I guess I always, I, I want to be the, like you stated, Joe, the employer, the employees want to be working for and be with for a long time, I think we struggle in this area just to find employees when we need them to begin with, so if we can keep them because of this, that's great, I do struggle a little bit knowing there isn't real savings to us, and that's, you know, that's part, where I struggle a little bit with it, but I always want to be the employer that is first looked at, and that part, I, I see it as a positive. So I mean, like you said, you know, it's open for discussion tonight, we're not making any motions or anything, but we do need to think about this, it's gonna, we'd have to make a decision in January, if we're gonna do it.
Yeah, we do have some deadlines in order to, that, like the teacher retirement programs is paid for out of management fund, it's not a general fund expense, those, to pay it out of the management fund, you have to be before April first, and you also have to give them forty-five days to make a decision, so once you get past first of the year, those deadlines start to come up quickly. Like the teacher program, this is not board policy you're changing, this is a, this would be a, just a program that you put in for, you know, what you mean? This is a, this would be a, just a program that you put in for whatever years you decided to put in.
I, I think it's good. I guess I've gone back and forth a little bit on this, not because I don't think employees deserve it, I think they do, but, you know, the, the teachers, the non-classified, right? It saves us money and it's not something that we do every year. It's not open-ended. I guess when we had discussed this, you know, it's, we do it for two years and then how do we know when to put it back in, you know? I could see it being a little bit of a problem, just that, you know, there are a handful of employees that would benefit from this, and this is kind of, we know that right now. That's why we're kind of trying to do a little something because there are a handful of people that have met and have longevity in the district that, you know, would benefit from it. But then how do we know, what's our guess, you know, what's our criteria, five years from now, 10 years from now, four years from now, three years from now, doing it again when somebody would meet?
Yeah. And I think that's why it would be in the best interest financially of the district to have it be a program where you do have control, rather than there being a criteria that we do this every other year, or we do this every five years, that the board keeps control over it. So number one, it's something that you can afford to do. And if it's something that you want to put in place to save, you have the ability to put it in place to save. You have complete control over those factors that are an important part of what you guys do in making sure the district is viable financially.
When we did the teacher one, we worked hard on regardless of age, that it was equity for all employees, be it full-time insurance or cash or a combination of both. And the key word was equity. How do we promote equity in this one?
Yeah, and again, that's a good, a good question. You know, we didn't tie anything to, and what Tom's saying, for example, it's not equitable and not legal for him to say, we're going to give you someone insurance until 65, for example, because that could mean more for one person than another. That's, that's age bias and that's, that's something that Iowa schools have lost in court. This is, this is the same. This is the same for everyone. Now their stipend could be different based on their service to the district, not based on age or, or anything, any other discriminatory factor. We, we like people who work for us. We like people who are here as much as they can. So it's, it's rewarding positive things for our employees.
I think loyalty and longevity are important. However, I hate to see us set precedents. This is not policy, this is not, we have not set, but it does set a precedent down the road of, hey, when we have a certain number of staff or certain people who become a certain age, is there a precedent that the next board or someone else is going to have to say, well, they offered that to them, so should we offer, you know, or do we need to offer that to these people? Longevity and loyalty are super important. But I always like to pay or see, see it as an asset now. I'd rather spend a certain amount of money paying people what they deserve and what the going rate is now versus at the end of the career compensating for loyalty and longevity. I think that, that will benefit us far greater in the short run than the long term.
Gee, I think those are great points. These are, those are paid out of different funds in this case.
I understand.
And I, and I know you guys do, and that's, and I, I wish the district had the ability to pay classified more to reward them for what they're doing for us. That becomes a general fund expense when they can, being able to sustain that over time would be difficult.
I understand.
But I, I agree with you philosophically, for sure.
And then we do understand that based on a person's salary or wage, that the amount earned in the retirement package will be different based on their wages.
Okay. Well, I appreciate, appreciate your guys' discussion and it'd be something that, that we continue to talk about, and if these guys want it on the agenda, then it'd be something we could put on there.
All right, I'll thank you again for the discussion. Anything else, Joe, in your report?
Um, just, I, I have talked with the, kind of public health in regards to the vaccine. Teachers would be possibly in the second part of Phase 1, but there is not a timeline to that. That's really probably the information piece that we're passing on this time. We don't know when that would be, but they are starting to make their plans to have that ready in our account.
All right. We'll move on then to administrative report, and we appreciate Mrs. Teacher's way, spending her time with us tonight and being with us and has her report for us.
Hi. I have just some information about social emotional learning that we've been doing at the elementaries, and this is what we've been having our PD focus on for the last couple of years. And actually, it's been a K-12 kind of focus with the social emotional learning, but I feel most comfortable talking about what's happening at the elementary, and it's all kind of a little bit different. We all have that old, that overview of SEL, social emotional learning, but what we're doing at the elementary looks a little bit different than what they're doing at the middle school and high school. So mine is really focused on just the elementary buildings. Excuse me. So what's been done so far? A couple of years ago, K-8 implemented second steps. It's a social emotional curriculum. Classroom teachers teach that. In the middle school, they teach it in their advisory period, and it works on social emotional skills, which I'll share a little bit more with you what those things are. In 2019, in May, we did a trauma-informed care professional development. The K-12 staff, including TAs, everybody, we did that here in the PAC. I actually came over for that. That was my first event at Algonah. We did fostering resilient learners, which is a book study that we, everybody, all the teachers read last year in K-12, and now we're doing a follow-up book on that this year, which is about relationship building. And we've been really focusing on restorative practices last year and this year. So we're continuing that. So what is social emotional learning? It's just helping kids learn and to do a better job of understanding and managing their emotions, setting and achieving goals, showing empathy, maintaining positive relationships, and making responsible decisions. And this, those are some of the things that the second step curriculum works on, and then the things that we're learning about is, we'll talk about that in a second too, but like actually putting those skills that we're trying to teach kids, like how to better manage their emotions, we're actually like trying to put that into practice and not just talking about it, but actually having the students actually use those skills that they're learning. And researches continues to show that that social emotional learning is really important, that's good, that students need to be in a place where their minds are ready to learn in order to learn. So if a kid comes in and they are, well, there's all those basic needs that need to be met, you know, they need to have sleep, and they need to have food, and they need all of those things, but also if they come in and they're frustrated or angry or sad or over hyper, all of those things that teachers try to, have to balance all of those things out and kind of level kids out so they're ready to learn. If we're learning how to add fractions in math, like if I'm angry, I'm probably not going to be the best learner. So working to help students manage those emotions and kind of understand what they're feeling and how to manage that. So how we've been doing that is we're studying in the last two years, restorative practices. What restorative practices are is basically just ways to further learn and put into practice those social emotional skills that we're learning, building a positive school climate, and healthy relationships between teachers and students, students and students, principal and students, and just really practicing all of those skills that we're learning, how to cycle, how to manage emotions, things like that. So we've been working with Maria Lance, and she is actually, I believe, a principal in the Des Moines School. And she works with, it's a, they've started a group called SEL for Iowa, and her and a couple of other people are really focused on that social emotional learning. So we've been working with her, and she's providing our training for our staff K-12. So in the last two years, we've been focusing on affective language and community building circles. Those are our two main focuses. We can flip the next one. There's a whole continuum of restorative practices. So the, the left-hand side is affective, affective statements and affective questions. The language piece is kind of a challenge. We, I don't know, we just talk a certain way, and you know, if you see someone running down the hall, you're like, hey, stop running. Well, it's like changing how we're talking and how we're talking to kids and how kids are talking to each other. It's been a challenge and it's something we really need to practice and be deliberate about. So it has been interesting, and the more we practice it, the better we get, but I still catch myself at times kind of reverting back to the way that we've always done it. And then I always try and model for everyone to hear because some of our TAs haven't been involved in this. And so having them hear how we're talking to kids and how kids are talking to each other, how it fits with what we're actually doing in PED, putting it into practice, can be a challenge, but we're, we're really working on it. So on the next slide, it shows instead of just saying that, hey, stop running, you know, you, you kind of turn it around and say, hey, when I see you running in the hallway, it makes me feel a little worried. I don't know that it's safe for you to be doing that. Can you slow down for me? Changing it around so they see the purpose behind why you might want them to change their behavior. When I hear you call John stupid, I feel sad because our class is committed to, you know, treating each other with respect. Can you find another way to express your feelings? What are you going to do with John to make that right? Things like that. And we hear kids say it too. It's, it's kind of fun to hear kids, even in a kindergarten circle the other day, a kid was like tapping a, tapping or making noise or something, and another kid's like, when you're doing that, it's hard for me to listen to others. Can you please sit still? And so like when kindergartners can talk to others in a way, instead of just turning and smacking the kid, it, it does make a difference. And you start to do things differently because I know my behavior is impacting someone else, I might change how I'm acting. So we're hearing the language used by both adults and students, and it is exciting to hear, but it definitely is something that we need to keep practicing because it, it just, it's just a change from what we're probably used to doing. These affective questions, so when there's a challenging behavior, like let's say there's a problem at recess, so we talk to kids just differently about it. We hear their version of the story, what they were thinking at that time, what have you thought about since? Who did you impact and what do you need to do to make things right? We have those that maybe were around when someone cheated at the rules at the game or something. And then asking kids like, what impact did that behavior have on you? And hearing them tell each other that it hurt my feelings or it made me sad or it made me angry when you fought about the rules or you punched your friend or something else. Hearing how, how your behavior impacts others has a strong impact on how you feel about what you did, and students do want to try and make things right because the relationship piece is so important to them. So it's interesting to hear. We're still working on this too, but let's say there was a, and music class, like something didn't go well, meeting with that music teacher and with the kids that were in that problem and kind of trying to sort and solve that problem out, hear how it impacts the teacher, hear how it impacts others. That's some of the stuff that we're working on. And this part with these questions is just kind of like our next step that we really need to dig into. So then the other end of the continuum are circles. And the circles have been a big focus, hopefully if you have kids in the school, you've heard them talk about their community building circles. It's happening every single day, I would say in almost every single classroom, and just trying to build that classroom community, strong relationships between the teachers and students and students and students, and a place where they feel safe, they can talk about their emotions and then just be ready to learn. So there's a couple of pictures of some third-grade circles, and circles are kind of run the same way. They can all look a little bit different, but the basics are, there's an opening where a teacher would welcome the students and they literally sit in a circle. It's been a challenge, kind of a COVID stuff, but we've got to figure it out. Go through the guidelines or norms or like what's the expectations, how do you act, what do you do? There's a check-in round where, and I'll show you in a second, like what a mood meter might be like, so the students are, are the teachers asking students like, how are you feeling right now? Questions throughout the circle. It could be based on, it can be based on a curriculum, it could be based on what'd you do this weekend. Some teachers do, like at Lusha also do like a would you rather Wednesday, would you rather have this or do that kind of question, and just sharing, building community. And then there's a checkout round where you could say like, what's your goal for today? What's one thing you're going to work on today? What's one way you're going to be kind to someone else today? Just kind of get them to focus, and then the teacher closes the circle just with like the main reminders and setting the day up for success. And some of our circles happen right away in the morning, and some of them happen after lunch or just whenever, if it's in a teacher's schedule. So the mood meter, see a lot, and it's a measure of, in the middle, going left to right, from unpleasant to pleasant, and from not having much energy to having a lot of energy. So we're teaching kids a lot of different vocabulary words for how they're feeling. Instead of just saying angry, I'm really angry right now, some kids might just say like they're in the red, which means, you know, they're feeling very unpleasant, but they have a lot of energy. But sometimes we can get that down and kids are doing better that, of saying, instead of just saying angry, maybe they're actually worried or irritated. Instead of just saying like happy or fine, they might say feeling lively or focused, just depending on what kind of mood they're in. We had a situation today in a fourth-grade circle where the kid said, you know, I'm in the green, I'm feeling good, and then another kid shared something bad, and they're like, oh, can I change my mood because I'm feeling a little bit more like in the blue because I feel sad for the other person, what they're going through. So kids are getting really aware of how they're feeling. And this mood meter, this check-in round, gives a teacher a good idea of just like what the classroom's feeling like, and maybe they can solve some problems before they get the day going. We also use it at staff meetings. And so at the beginning of the year, we had one of our first staff meetings, the Tuesday after Labor Day, and the teachers were like red. And I was like, okay, well, that's going to change the plan. We're not going to do what I had normally planned for the staff meeting today. We're going to stop, talk about all this stuff where we were worried about with COVID and seating charts and plexiglass and all of those things, and talk about that stuff because they weren't ready to talk about career development plans and other things like that because they were feeling overwhelmed and nervous and frustrated and all of those things. So you can adjust your plans based on the mood of the room and hopefully actually make an impact with the people that are there. Because if they're in the red, they're probably not going to listen to what you say. So I had to request, I won't make you do it, but when people, I had asked for input before I presented tonight, so they wanted me to run the board meeting or run this like a circle and have everyone check in with their mood, but I'll just let you do that and you can think of it on your own. You don't have to share it out loud. But the kids are really good. They're very, you know, it looks different in kindergarten than it does in fourth grade, but they do a good job of knowing where they're feeling. We talk about if kid says they're hyper, which is, you know, kind of in the middle top, but their body's not showing that they have a lot of energy, we might ask them. Because I'm, and one said, like, well, I'm feeling really hyper in my head, I'm really excited because we're getting into copy, da, 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 but their body wasn't showing that. So we're trying to get their, to really figure out if their mood matches what they're showing in their teacher. So different kinds of circles that we use. There's the basic connection circle. We try to have the majority of our circles be proactive. The responsive circle would be after there's that problem at recess, let's sit down and talk about it. We got to figure out something different with these football games because every time it's ending up in a fight. So let's make a plan and figure out something different and figure out how our actions impact others. And my favorite is a celebration circle. If you ever get a chance to come to like a third-grade classroom when they do a celebration circle, if it's your birthday, every single student in the room, they either tell something nice about you or they just say like, happy birthday, I hope you have a great year, or they'll say like, I love it that you're my friend, you tell the funniest jokes, and they, every single person goes around, and when you hear these little kids tell that to each other, it just like warms your heart because they're so kind to each other. So I love celebration circles. And pretty big day when it's your birthday in third grade and every single kid in the room's going to say something positive to you. Some feedback from students. One of the students that sometimes has a hard time said that he likes circles because now he has a way to tell people how he's feeling. If the kids look forward to the circles every day, if the teacher's like, no, we don't have time, we're not going to have a circle, like they'll be moaning and groaning. They want to have a circle, they like to do their check-ins and talk to each other. We solve problems, like our recess problems during circle time, and the celebration circle makes me feel loved. Those are some things that the kids have said. And the teachers. Students are learning empathy and awareness of others' feelings, where they're increasing their vocabulary by using that mood meter. I feel very in tune with how my students are feeling each day and who might need an extra check-in. So the teachers use that time in the morning and maybe later they'll be like, hey, you know, Jay, can you stay in for a second here at recess? I just want to chat with you for a minute. I just want to chat with you for a minute, something like that. And that circles have built, helped me build relationships with my students. So we're using circles to help increase our social emotional skills. So our plans are just to continue implementing the things that we've practiced, practicing, learn more about restorative circles, which that's the ones where maybe that these two kids are fighting and asking those questions that are sometimes hard. It's hard for kids to know like, what impact did your behavior have on others and what things can you do to make that right? And then we're considering incorporating adult social emotional learning. Maria Lance, the one that's trained us, she has been here to observe circles in all the elementary buildings and give us feedback. So that's some of the feedback that she had talked to us about too. So I talked really fast, sorry about that, but does anyone have any questions? The middle school does circles too. The high school, I'm not sure that they do as many. They're working on some different lighting skills, but identifying what skills the kids might be lacking to help get those to improve different behaviors and.
I think it's great. I'm just trying to put a picture of myself back in elementary doing this. I don't know that, I don't know. So it's great.
Yeah. It's so neat when you hear kids, I was in a circle and the kids were telling how they felt, and for a little bit, I kind of felt bad because the kids were going around and saying like, well, I'm frustrated because so-and-so did this at recess. And the next kid's like, well, I'm angry because so-and-so did this at recess. It was all kind of geared toward one person and I felt bad, like my heart went out to that person because their behavior had impacted others. On the other hand, I was so proud of the kids for speaking up and really telling that person how they felt instead of just like tattling to the teacher or something like that. And though it did kind of feel like others were, I just felt bad, I didn't want people to gang up. But knowing that your behavior of pushing that kid down on the way out to recess and pushing him down the step impacted like a lot of people and made a lot of people angry. So hopefully that student won't repeat that same behavior another day, knowing how it impacted so many people besides just the person that they did it to. So it's interesting.
When you were talking about circles and effective comments, it made me feel in the yellow area very.
Well, that's good because when I practiced my speech to my husband, they made him feel, I said, like you used the word like continuum and he went and looked at his phone, he was done listening. So I.
It's really good. We did foster care for a little boy for the better part of a year and did some education. That trauma-informed is sort of the buzzword and, you know, it's not just a fad. I mean, there's a lot of research that has gone behind, you know, just what you called the effective, is that what it is? Effective comments and things. And just, you know, a lot of kids, whether, you know, it's severe trauma like we think and whether it's abuse or neglect or something, but every kid has suffered some form of trauma in their lives and just learning how to get kids to respond to that. I mean, it's, you know, I think it's really good what you guys are doing, just, you know, kids being able to get in touch in the circles and different things. And especially, I mean, we can all get better about how to communicate, you know, with kids that, you know, instead of saying no, you know, don't run, like you were given that example. I mean, a kid probably has heard that a thousand times at the home where they just get yelled at, but instead, you know, saying it in a different way and educating their staff and stuff about that, how about you can make a difference in the kid, I just think is really, really important. I mean, you guys certainly do so much more than just, you know, teach, you know, just lessons. I mean, it's just, it's why, I mean, schools are so important for kids, just to learn life skills and a safe environment and things. So thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay. We'll move into the new business portion of our agenda. We're going to start off with the resolution supporting the proposed use of save revenue for the athletic infrastructure project, what we had our earlier public meeting on.
Yeah, and this resolution is for the use of the sales tax, the save dollars for an athletic facility that is not attached to the school. So I do have the resolution decree and the general information over.
We do need to read that way as far as the motion.
This resolution is required as part of legislation that was passed a couple of years ago.
Any questions? If not, we entertain a motion.
I'm trying to find the green to read it.
I make a motion to approve the resolution supporting the proposed use of save revenue for an athletic facility infrastructure project. Thank you, Todd. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Okay. Andrew, thank you. Do we have a second? Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We kind of have the same thing with number nine.
Yeah, but the second resolution is for issuing of the bonds to refinance the debt that the district currently has for the Nard Center Middle School and bonds for the, to fund the Athletic Gateway Softball Project.
Right. We need a motion, kind of read like it's written.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution supporting the proposed issuance of approximately $9,750,000 in school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue refunding bonds.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We need to see approved engagement letter with Piper Sandler.
We have two engagement letters. We'll start with Piper Sander. We need to approve Piper Sander to serve as our placement agent or underwriter for the proposed issuance of bonds for Athletic Gateway Softball Project and to refinance our current debt. I linked in the letter of engagement, it outlines the specifics of what they do in the agreement in helping us through that process.
So the first one, we need the approved engagement letter with Piper Sandler. Correct. Yep. Motion for that. So moved. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now we need the motion to approve the engagement letter.
So this is, this engagement letter is for the same, this is our legal counsel, Ayler Zinkuny, who we need to approve them as our law firm, as a bond counselor in connection with the issuance of bonds.
Why do we use Ayler Zinkuny versus our regular school attorney?
Yeah, these guys specialize in this.
Okay.
This part, and they work with Piper Sander in the bond, which is a big part of it.
Okay.
Ayler Zinkuny, I would say, I would say is probably the best school law firm there is in state.
All right. Do we have a motion for the engagement letter?
I swam move.
Thank you, Lori. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now to approve the dropout prevention application.
This is something we do annually. We approve this amount to fund our dropout prevention and at-risk programs throughout the entire district. It's a per pupil amount. It's a weird formula, .046 times your district cost per pupil, times your certified enrollment. It's very valuable to us. It's over $400,000. I think it's $416,000 this year. Allows us to fund a number of programs, including our high school at-risk program all the way down through the elementary. I recommend SBRC modified supplemental amount for dropout prevention application.
Well, we ought to do a motion first.
We need a motion.
We need to read off the.
No, you can just, a motion to approve the dropout prevention application.
I do a motion to approve the dropout prevention application.
Thank you, Todd. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Jay brought up the roll call vote because when you click on the link, there's a wording here and then it says roll call vote at the end of it.
I'm sorry, it wasn't on the link. I guess I didn't see that.
I would do a roll call.
Okay. Mary Beth, can we do a roll call? We have a motion and a second.
Berzal?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Lindbach?
Yes.
Luajie?
Yes.
Ningja?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Dancy? Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for noticing that. Second reading of the 200 series.
Yes, this will be our second reading. There are some revisions to the 200 series. In section 202 for the elections, the school election takes place on the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November, odd numbers of years. It used to be in September, so that's updating that to when school elections are. It also says each biannual school election, you should just have it, this is, Iowa Association of School Boards recommend just each school election is used to elect citizens of the board to maintain our seven-member board. Also, and this is still in section 202 of the election, citizen of the school district seeks to see on the board must file their nomination papers with the board secretary or the board secretary's designate. Our policy said between 64 and 40 days before the school election, the recommendation is just in accordance with the timeliness established by law. The last revision is in term of office, again, taking out September and putting in November. Board members elected for a full term at a regular scheduled school election in November. Anything else that anyone saw? Gloria, thank you for your help with some of those I knew that you found.
This is only the second reading.
We're ready to.
We're ready to. Okay, we'd be ready then. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, any other than anybody else? If not, we have a motion to approve the second reading of the 200 series with the changes. So moved. Thank you, Jay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Open enrollment.
We have four open enrollment applications. All four are for students who are opening and rolling into the district from the North Union Districts. I recommend we approve these applications.
So they're.
Some of these are cleanup. Actually, four of them might have been cleanup, those kids who were coming here, I think two of them might be new, but they all are from open enrollment.
All right. We need a motion to approve the open enrollment.
So.
Thank you. Andrew, I think it was. Yeah. Second, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Todd. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Then we go into the contracts, the new contracts.
New contracts. We have five new contracts for approval this month. Travis Burkey is assistant softball coach.